The TC Freeze, located in Monizuma, Indiana. We offer over thirty-two soft-serve flavors of creamy delicious ice cream. Ham-breaded Pork Tenderloin. Famous homemade Pony Sauce. And don't forget our roasted Chicken. Open Tuesday through Sunday, ten thirty to nine thirty. To place an order, call 765-245-2887. We appreciate your business.
Liberty, Liberty.
I know. That commercial cracks me up. Mom watches a, uh, Simms soap opera. And I was like, who's that guy? And then I was like, is that Liberty, Liberty? And she goes, oh my God, he does.
Are you taking care of Tony down there, Barb?
Yeah.
He attends meetings a lot, so he's got the gist of everything.
You guys should welcome him and introduce him.
You'll like him.
When you get sit down.
I watch him grow up.
He's got a lot more than just Cody.
How many copies of the meeting back there?
It's only like six pages.
Everybody, it's like eight pages.
It's only like six.
Oh, hopefully.
Carol, you want to introduce our new board agenda?
I was gonna wait till now he got sent.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Welcome to the meeting tonight. We have finally a full board. Like to introduce Anthony McClain.
Tommy.
And he is taking Becky Bailey's spot for us. And we're very happy to have a full board and to have Tony join us. Do you have any questions to start off?
No.
We'll just throw you into the frying pan. Well, we're gonna finally look at their meeting notes from last time. See if we need anything. Have any corrections?
I do not see any, so I'll make a motion to pass the meeting minutes for February thirteenth.
For the whole minutes?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Minutes are passed. Anybody see any corrections?
You do need to approve your executive session minutes.
Oh, well, we can say.
There's nothing to say, so you can just make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the executive meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Executive meeting minutes are approved. Who was that, you and Ken? Go around the room for public comment. You're stuck. You don't have any comment? Okay, they're just here to listen. Mister Ratcher, do you have any public comment?
I'm not the public.
I know, but if you were a public person, I would listen to you.
I'm just here representing.
If you can do both things at the same time, if you want. Okay, we'll start with old business.
Kevin, I got, I got one more. It was eight pages, Cody.
Well, eight pages.
Good thing I just got a case paper.
I should cover everything, eight pages.
I was gonna say, well, I'll be talking about the minutes, but yeah.
I should cover everything, eight pages.
Whenever everybody wants to look at it, you don't have to look at it right now, so, because it's long.
Yeah, home reading. Okay, you're an old business.
We're an old business, so. So we've made one payment, the first payment, now we're, we made another one.
Okay, so we will make another one, the, um, on the payment, okay, on the Storm Act project, Stormwater Project. We are at pay up number two. Total is two hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. As of this pay up, the project was seventy percent billed of the total. And, um, maybe I'm not saying that right.
Okay.
Let me see, let me, let me pull mine. We had a monthly recap meeting and Kevin came. So I didn't have to just do it by myself.
I was in the hospital.
You were in the hospital?
I didn't want to.
Two seventy-eight.
And Barb didn't want to. And, um, it says, they made some changes. They are expecting to be digging for another week to a week and a half, so that may be pretty well wrapped up. Um, I believe that, it doesn't say on here, maybe it said in the email, but it was seventy percent billed or seventy percent complete. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Oh, overall seventy percent of the total installed to date based on pay up two.
Okay.
Um.
So then the last payment was two oh two or eighty-eight, thirty?
Maybe, yeah, to them for their total.
Okay.
There was a question, they, they started discussing a change order. Change order number one has been quoted for the extra work at twenty-two thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars, and it's currently under review. So, I do understand that they did have to move some water lines and things like that, but I kind of wasn't expecting an extra twenty-two thousand dollars on our budget. So, I didn't really know what to say in the meeting when they were talking about it. And then they were just telling me it was kind of under review and we would kind of sort it out. Um, so, I called Christie Daryl the next day and she said, wait a second, wait a second, because that's Christie. So she called and talked to Eric Smith and asked him if he would give me a call. So he called me later on in the day and so that he talked to Steve Shannon and Johnny Roselli, the project managers and overseers or whatever, and that it should be a wash because some, they've been able to change some materials along the way. They, they didn't need crushed rock fill like they thought they would. So it shouldn't, we're, we don't have enough contingency for twenty-two thousand, I'm sure we don't. But between what we do have and some change out in materials, we should be fine, is what he's saying. So, um, because to me, a change order, you execute a change order before you do the work.
Yeah.
All right.
And I get that they didn't really have a choice on moving those water lines and whatnot, but, um, you know, we, we are gonna have to consider, since we are talking about stormwater, we have at least three leaking valves, maybe four, due to the project. We do not have the capacity to repair those valves. Gary does not have the capacity to repair those valves as our water operator either. B and T is probably a good fit to repair them. I did mention it to Bobby from B and T in the meeting. He said he would, you know, they could talk about that and get back to him. Those valves were turned as a result of the project. So, um, Gary also mentioned if there was some contingency in the project, could that be used for repairing those valves? So, that's a discussion.
Are we talking repairing or replacing?
I don't know, I don't know if they need repaired or replaced, that I don't know. I do know that the one by Rich Baker's building over here, I do believe that that is broken.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I don't know if the one, there was, one of the original ones they turned down on Oak Street, it was kind of bubbling and leaking, but Gary was hoping that it would kind of seal itself up.
Right.
I don't know if it has or not, I haven't been down there.
One on East still leaking.
On East is still leaking, and I believe the one over towards the subdivision is still leaking. So, we are, we are leaking, they just haven't been turned. I mean, they just, I, who knows how long they've been turned? And Gary made the mention of, should have probably been town practice to exercise those valves from time to time. But, that's never been the thing as long as, he said that's a top-down thing, your operator needs to say that. He said, and I, I've never said it, no one told me that, you know? So there's no one to blame, you know, but they are broken.
No handbook with that, is it?
Mm-mm.
So what will the sticker shop be going?
I have no idea. I have no, I can't even con, there's no concept for me of that, so.
Ken, do you know anything about valves?
I do, I mean, I do, but I don't know about the cost of something like that.
Because, how do you even get, I mean, do you have to, since they're in this little bitty manhole, do you have to dig that out around the manhole? That's the thing, yes, to repair. And.
Usually.
He said that, Gary said also it would probably have to be a line stop in order to repair two, which is what they had to do, um, because they kind of fixed that one almost live. They had the line stopped on one side when they moved the one on Central Street, so.
Well, I was talking to somebody about it and they said sometimes they just cut it off and replace the whole valve. Or they can take it apart.
If they haven't been used for forty years, that's what I would do.
Repack it and try that. But, since they are old.
And you have the boil order and all that, you know?
Yeah, because then you go into. We had a boil advisory, is what they called it this time in the subdivision, for anyone that was shut off during that one. And, the other thing is, when they shut that valve off, they didn't know that they were shutting off the subdivision. They thought they were only shutting off a few houses on East Street and around the corner on Middle. They had no idea that that was shut off until someone called and said, hey Natalie, I have no water. So, um, that's, um, so that's something else, we just don't know. Nobody knows what they do, you know, what shuts off what, so.
Well, that, that'd be something to explore.
Yeah.
Because there may be another valve on down or something for the subdivision.
So.
And that may be a good time to start mapping some of it.
Yeah.
Right, we have.
Then you know which ones.
We do have some valves, we have a pretty good, we have this big list of valves and it'll, it mentions, like they're numbered, and it'll say, this valve is located thirty feet west of this intersection. So Cliff was able to find most of the valves pretty easily, based upon that big description, this list I have in the filing cabinet. Um, but again, that one line, we didn't really know about the other main line over there. It wasn't on our map, and Tony happened to know about it. We think there's another map somewhere from when the tower was put in, that has some extra lines that we don't, that I don't, I think it's over in the shop.
Okay.
So, but since we are talking about the consequence, are we talking about this? Um, we have a, since we did the water shutdown and everybody in the subdivision didn't have water for however many hours and everything, everybody's been back on, we have one residence in the subdivision that's having a pressure issue. So when he turns his water on, he has pressure and then it decreases to a trickle in his house. So, he called and talked to me, I talked to Gary, told him to do a few things, then Gary talked to him. Gary went over there, and Gary and Cliff actually changed out the brass on his meter. And, um, our side is fully pressurized now. Gary is concerned that, this guy just had a whole house water line replacement not too long ago. He's concerned that perhaps there was something in his line or we shot something into his line when we turned it back on, that could be causing that, that there's something stuck. So, he said it's up to us, like, if we want to, like, call a plumber to kind of investigate what's going on, if we, how the town wants to handle that. It's not, I mean, it's up to you guys, he said that. Um, I mean, the guy's been really nice and he's just trying to figure it out, but no one else has complained, no one else has had a concern. But Gary said, you know, there could have been some kind of a rock that was in there that was fine, and then they moved it, or, I don't know. So what's your thoughts? Gary said he's only ever experienced this one other time, and it's when he worked for Indiana American Water. And he said when he, when he called them and told them the issue, he said, they, they said, call a plumber and we'll pay for it. So, I, I don't know. You guys tell me what you want to do. I don't have the answers.
I think if the lines have been, his lines have been replaced, I don't know how much that is to have his lines replaced.
But where were they replaced from? Just inside the house, or?
They were replaced in his yard, or replaced outside, so, yeah.
Don't do that, it's no.
Yeah, scary, yeah. Super nice guy, and he's not, and like I said, he's not been a jerk or anything about it. He's just trying to figure it out. And he did say that shortly after they replaced the line, he kind of had this issue, and then it went away over time, and now it's back.
I remember when that, we turned the water back on there, and there was a major deal. We had to, I had to call Mike up, he had to come, and we had to find a fitting. I say we get a plumber, have him check it, make sure it's done right. I think it's probably right there at the meter.
Well, Gary was at the meter today.
Yeah.
So Gary and Mike replaced the brass in the meter, the actual meter itself.
So it's between the meter and the house is the issue.
So, yeah, so our side is good, but it's their side that's not at this point.
But it sounds like they've also had issues in the past with this, so maybe we say.
Well, I think it was fine until.
Well, they, she just said though, when they put the plumbing in, or that new line in, they had the same issue. And then it got better.
Mm-hmm.
It got better, and so I don't know if what we've done has aggravated the issue. I don't, I don't know, this is, this is totally on you guys to decide, so. And you can do, we'll split it with you, you can do whatever you want.
That's kind of what I was thinking, was like.
So.
You get a plumber, see what's going on with it, and if they determine that it might be something that was, um, because of the result of that, we'll, we'll look at going.
I think something's hybrid world blues or something, with all the.
And then if it's not, then what would?
If it's not, then we split it, or?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Well, even if it's, you know, if the plumber says that, you know, it's.
I guess, I guess not really saying the word not, because if it's not, then it's their fault. But if it's, like, undetermined, I guess, then we just split it if a plumber says, you know, I just don't freaking know.
That's what I mean, I don't know, I don't know what to do there, so.
We had the same issue at a rental a couple of years ago.
Split if he didn't know what to do.
Well, and that's the thing, like, the city came out and determined it wasn't on there, and, and the line had been replaced, so, and literally, we had a plumber come out and they kind of roto-rooted it, and it was just sand and stuff in there.
Please.
But, and, and there's.
I think we should get a plumber for him. Or they get a plumber and we do what we can.
I think we should get a plumber.
We just call a plumber out and see if they can, yeah.
And they'll go from there.
Okay.
If that sounded all right, we'll just have him check it out.
You need to take a vote on that.
Well, I guess, and that's also us hiring them, so that's them determining whether or not, you know, it's something of our fault or theirs, so. Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, well, somebody make a motion.
Is everybody agreeing that we would go ahead and hire a plumber, see what the problem is, and then take our advisement, what we should do next, yeah?
I do.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Cody's making a motion.
Oh, making a motion, yeah.
I'll second it.
Ken's gonna second that, okay, that's fine. Now take your vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Okay, all right. And then, did you take a motion to approve pay up two?
Oh, not yet.
Because you need to approve that too, yeah.
Okay. So Natalie was talking about this payment that we're making, the second payment, two hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. And that goes out in the next couple of days?
Yeah, that'll go out to the state, the state will send that to me, I will cut the check. I will, they will, yeah, it's a process.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Cody makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Five seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
If I have any questions, I'll, Stormwater Project, anything else?
Are we actually talking about it?
Yeah.
So what else I gotta? So they're gonna come back and, I guess there's a seeding and all that. I know the asphalt is, but the seeding.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And they still got a shop last, the ditch will be there.
I think so.
They still gotta do all that, I haven't looked at the ditch part.
Mm-hmm.
Looks like they're very close to being done to me, but I don't.
The installation has gone pretty well for them, they felt like, in the, we had a, so our meeting was Wednesday last week, and they, I think they rained out Friday. Was it Friday that it rained? Did I, did anybody else drive? I drove around to see if it was catching water. I mean, I did, I was like, let's see if it's working. I said in the meeting, I was like, well, maybe it rains on Friday, we'll know if it's working. And, um, Johnny Roselli said, I know it's working, it was raining the other day and I could, I could hear it flowing, so, um.
Yeah, they didn't work Friday.
Yeah, so they said they thought they would have another week to a week and a half of digging, so they may have gone, they may be close on that.
Sure looks like it.
And then they will come back, seed and straw, and like that kind of stuff and all the asphalt repairs.
Did we have any trouble with any of the, our residents in the subdivision?
No, everybody's been, I mean, all I have heard is positive from everybody I've talked to about the crews.
They've been good people to work with.
Yes, that they've been.
Yeah, I thought it was them.
Mm-hmm. That they've been very, very, they've been very accommodating, they were really, I mean, they gave people dirt, they, you know, moved stuff around for people, they've been really good. I've heard nothing but positives, I haven't had anybody complain. And like with the water shutdowns, they waited until ten thirty to shut that water down because they figured that was the end of Little Bear's rush.
Yeah.
They don't have to do that. Um, and then, when they shut down, of course I called everybody that I could call that I had a good number on file for it, to let them know we were on the boil advisory. I didn't call them and let them know we were off of it, but hopefully they could figure that out on their own after their two days. Um, everybody was nice on the phone, everybody's been, everybody's been good.
Well.
Yeah, I mean, they've been great, they're like young blood, Jacob's little boy, he was out there looking at him and he brought his little dump truck thing out, and they actually came over and stuck him on there and let him, I mean, you know.
Yeah, they did.
I should have took Laramie down there.
Yeah, I mean, they've just been great to.
They have, they've been very nice, I know the kids, I know the daycare were there, but the kids have gone out front and watched them in the equipment and stuff like that, they've been really nice and stuff too, so, yeah.
Well, that's good.
Mm-hmm.
Just tell him next time he can't go on vacation while he's working.
I think everything, yeah, but it's been good.
Okay. Checks in the mail.
Yep.
All right. Well, it doesn't, it, you know, I guess I can't read the plans that well because it doesn't look anything like I thought of Storm two, down at, you know, down by my end, so. Oh, well.
I don't know.
As long as it works.
Yeah, for sure.
And that they, you know, talk to the engineer and all that. Okay, Stormwater. What about, um, have we installed the racks for on the, our new truck, and?
So Mike has put the back rack on the truck, and he, I got some seat covers for him. They're actually on the bills, I bought them on Amazon and was getting ready to change my debit card, and I actually can't buy now, so we have to pay Natalie back for those.
Is that kind of messing up a little?
No, it was me, I was just, I went to switch out and put the town debit card in, and then I just, I was like, oh, I just bought them, okay. So, anyway, they're fifty dollars. So so far, the seven hundred and fifty dollars, they've spent seventy-five dollars on the rack and fifty dollars on our seat covers.
All right.
So, um, and he said on a toolbox that he feels like it's a waste of money, they're just gonna paint up the one they have. That's what he told me the other day, so, I don't know. So that's where we're at on the truck stuff.
I'm liking all this proclamative, you know, like, never mind.
I know what you're saying.
I can't say that word.
We need to give him a light though, Kevin, I need you to help me get a light.
Get with me and I'd help him more.
Okay, all right, I'll tell him then, okay.
Okay. And, I assume Scott Craig accepted our.
Yeah, he did, yeah, he's good.
Okay, on to new business, I guess.
Oh, you want to talk about community crossings?
Oh, well, okay, let's talk about that.
Thor on our side.
Community crossings, um.
Is that new business?
Well, it's old, it's old, um. Ken reached out and sent an email, was it last week, Ken?
What are we talking about, the road?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Yeah, last week.
He sent him an email last week, um, asking when we were gonna get together and meet, since the weather's changing and warming up. And. DC Construction is coming Tuesday?
Tuesday, it's one or one-thirty, I don't remember off the top of my head, I think it's one o'clock.
Yep, next Tuesday afternoon, HWC will be here.
There's quite a few people that's gonna be there, if everybody in that email chain's coming, I don't know if they are.
Yeah, so, next Tuesday, mm-hmm, yep. Um, to discuss the plan for the roads.
What's that?
Where's the meeting, wanna be here, or?
Um, I was gonna shoot another email, in my mind, we'll just meet here then.
Then head out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Instead of having everybody just stand out in the middle of the road down there.
Right.
Sounds good.
I can't remember if it was one or one-thirty either.
Is that, is that the day it's supposed to snow this week?
Ah, hopefully rain.
So that's where we're at on that one. They did send me an email reminding me to close it out soon, and they all are aware of our situation though, so I'm not concerned about that. Um, Ron Shepard did call me and said that Kevin, hey, our engineer is concerned that we just need to get it done really quickly for the closeout point, but NDOT wants us to have a good road.
Right.
So, there, yeah.
There's noises rushing.
There's, yeah.
It is one o'clock.
It is one o'clock, okay.
On the nineteenth.
Yep.
Now, it was weird, the dates, he had them messed up, was that the nineteenth, yeah, nineteenth is Tuesday.
Mm-hmm, yep, okay. That was old business too then.
Okay. Now we got.
Um, oh.
Door.
So, yeah, doors, oh, cemetery issues on that, um, I put in there about the headstone, I'll just update. Uh, Terre Haute Monument gave me an estimate to clean that graffitied headstone, was five hundred dollars. Um, it's also a really old headstone.
That is a really old.
And it's very porous, so they make no guarantees of, they think they can get some of it off, but they're afraid it's probably soaked in, they're not sure how much they can get off. But they can come out and they do have a way to clean it, and they said it would be five hundred dollars, so Kevin added that to the case.
Lexi has, has added it.
Yep.
I didn't realize they even spray painted that tree, I didn't notice that till yesterday.
I saw that, I thought, well, maybe whoever you were gonna have look at it sprayed it, but then it was, looked like somebody's name on there.
So you, literally, the day after we had the last meeting, I was like, well, there's spray paint on the back of, uh, Little Bear. Well, Little Bear has like, their back door or something has like, I was like, did anybody see that? And then I was like, I don't think so, so who knows?
Yeah.
Well, they'd already racked up over five thousand dollars.
I'm sure. Yeah, so that's what she said it would cost, so.
I looked at that roof, you know, that, that panel.
Did you look at that roof?
Yeah, I did, it's about yay big.
Yeah.
It's tiny.
It's way up there, I don't know. I don't know, it was high up there, so.
Looks like the bucket of the Eskimo.
To me, it would have to be something like that, because it was such a.
Okay, well, the guy's like, oops.
Wrong way.
But I mean, we can fix it, I mean.
Well, that's what I meant, if it's just a simple fix.
Get a piece of metal and just, yeah.
I mean, one panel, pop it out and pop another one in.
I wouldn't even do that, I'd just do it right up on it, just climb up there and just.
I was gonna say, just patch that, it's not a whole new panel, just patch that, yeah.
That tree, is my opinion, I didn't take David with me yet, but to me, it looks like it is dead, yes, my opinion, but, it's gonna take a big saw, I don't know if the town has a saw that big, did.
It's gonna be a professional crane job.
Not necessarily, yeah, well, but again, I'm used to screwing around with my boy, but.
Well, as long as it falls to the east.
Yeah, definitely gonna take a big saw and it's gonna take wedges and just make it go that way, but. If that's, if that's the decision, I.
Did it look like it was hit by lightning, Ken? Or maybe just caught fire?
Yeah, it just looks dead.
How's it just get?
And even that's where maybe we can wait for a month or two and see if it actually does. Because that other tree that's next to it, it's not actually started budding yet, but a lot of the other ones, so.
Right, and see what it does first.
Kinda like the tree that's in the middle of the road, it's sprouting leaves.
It stayed green a little bit last year, I think, but.
Tree removal's fairly expensive.
It is.
Is it not?
It's very expensive, yes.
I would say that would be probably around four or five thousand.
Oh, my god.
I'm just guessing.
Well, Mike said he can cut it down.
Yeah.
Go for it, Mike.
I don't, I don't think so.
Now, one thing I did not, I totally forgot, was look at these doors, so. Till I walked up here tonight, so.
Okay, of course, Natalie's dang doors.
One day last week, when it was warm out, I messed with, and it's really, it probably could just be, wedged and like, rehinged.
They've dried. They've seriously dried, yeah. I just, I mean.
We'll just get you new doors.
I think it's time for doors.
I think it's time.
I don't know who to, I don't, we need to figure out what we need first, so.
New doors.
Let's get one of them little mini garage doors.
It'll roll up door? Windows in it, like the patios?
That'd be fun, listen to you all night.
That would look modern and tasteful.
I did not give you a cemetery report or anything, so you can go to new business, I don't actually have any new business.
New business?
Is there any new business?
You can talk about Coggy's ordinance thing a little bit, that's kinda new.
Can we bring up like, I have, you know, how about the complaints or the?
That, that should go under departments, I would think.
Oh geez, man, can't talk about. So, we've talked and talked and talked until we blew in the face over, you know, cleanliness of the town and, you know, issues with certain properties and, so I went out, I looked over probably, four or five different small towns similar to, similar size to us. And Whiting, Indiana, or New Whiting, one of the two, they're like right there together. Had a very, you know, clean, concise, you know, pretty much everything that we've talked about had issues with, is listed in it, um, it goes into like Indiana code and sections, you know. So pretty much, I went and took that, and just amended it for Rosedale. Made zero changes as far as their wording, um, other than changing our ordinance number, the ordinance, last ordinance change date, um, other than that, it's all, you know, all goes directly towards, what they had, um, it, really, I mean, it's pretty much, just kinda states, you know, keep your yard clean.
Or you put a lien on the property. If the town cleans it up.
It does say we have the right to go in and clean it up. And cite, yes, at the owner's cost, yes.
Where it says, Indiana code thirty-six one six two, that's where it talks about, if you look that coda, talks about the town putting liens against.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I remember, I looked up, there's a couple of different codes in here and I looked up, a couple of them and I was like, okay, that just literally says that we.
Yeah, I looked it up real quick just to see what it said.
It says it, it says it right here, whereas pursuant to Indiana code.
Yeah, right, but when you read thirty-six one six two, it's pretty long and it's talking about, if the town goes on somebody's property and cleans it up, the town has to put a lien against it and it brings in the county auditor and.
Right. And then if they ever sold the house and goes on property tax.
I'm just, you know, I'm just saying, you know, it just talks about, you know, endangering the public health, safety or welfare, you know. I guess, you know, just the way I read this is, you know, those are more just a pain, you know, I guess it's not like actual safety issues.
Well, the, cause it goes into both, um, safety and like just public nuisance, is like, your property's dirty, pretty much. Cause yeah, there's like four or five codes in that first section.
Does it say how long we, we give them before they?
Uh, yes, theirs was no less than two days, from the initial and then no more than seven, um, so they have a week to make their first.
Statute says no less than ten days and no more than sixty. So, you gotta, this, I mean, I get what you're doing and I get it, but we need some clarification on it.
Right, we, I mean, we do need Scott to look at it too.
Oh, yeah.
This is just preliminary, preliminary and.
Cause I mean, you, you read through here and look at some of the stuff they're listing, there's probably not a house in town that wouldn't be in violation of this. Some of the stuff that's on here. But we do have a problem with certain homes and so, those homes have been issued, affidavits, which once I, once I do that, it's kinda out of my hands. Um, that's where we gotta get Scott involved and, you know, if the town wants to go clean their property up, start charging them for it and, how much, how, how involved does Scott have to be?
I know it's been a couple of years, but, but then I don't remember all the details, what, what did we end up doing with this one? How did we ended up getting to that point?
We went into court, so we took that resident to court, um, I do believe we went to court, no less than, I know that I personally sat in the courtroom at least three times.
I was gonna say, I was like, at least two or three.
Well, after last month's meeting, I went to, I don't know, I'll give you a whole list.
Right, I gave it to you.
Six or eight properties.
Yeah, so we went into court and he ordered fines, um, a daily fine.
But how did we get to the court side of that? I just can't remember. Did we issue, like he, you issued?
Yeah, we issued like an affidavit and then, um, I don't know what actually brings them into court, I don't.
I can't remember that part.
We filed against them.
I think once you give them a deadline, you give them ten days, twenty days, whatever it may be, and they don't do anything within that time, then you kinda pass it off to Scott and he takes them to court after that.
Right, and then you just take them to court and.
Which that's where, if you guys wanna pass this, I'm, I just need to sit down with Scott and work with him, to make sure I don't get the town or myself in a, in a pinch.
Right, right, so that's why he would have to look at this, but, so we went to court multiple times, um, Judge Swaim gave them some time to clean up. We returned to court, dissatisfied, he started issuing them a daily fine after that. Then, um, told them he thought that if they want to live like that, then they should live in the country. He's not, he's not very, he's not very forgiving on those things. And then we went back to court and at that point, we were given permission to enter the property, and get dumpsters, and we did pay for the dumpsters out of our pocket and we also paid, to load the dumpsters, we paid staff and everything, but we also did have police presence like the entire time too. So Clyde sat down there in the police car, did you sit down there in the police car at all?
Well, which one you talking about?
The Stevenses.
I might've been there for a little bit.
Yeah, I know at the very beginning of bringing in the dumpsters, I, the sheriff's department was here too, at one point, um.
Now, there's some.
We didn't, I don't think it was a successful mission by any means, it was an attempt.
A little further back than this, there is some provisions for the town to impose fines.
Yeah, found section seven. Yeah, that's what it is.
First violation, hundred and fifty.
But a lot of the properties you're gonna ask to get cleaned up are people that probably can't pay the fines to begin with. Actually something you have to take into account if you're gonna go up there and clean the property. I did notice on one page, it says New Whiting Police Department.
Coggy's gonna find and replace.
Yeah, it's like the second, the last page at the top, I just tried to read through it real quick.
I think it is important to recognize that we do give residents an opportunity at cleanup day for some help, to get rid of some items. I mean, not everybody can afford to get a dumpster. We've been pretty gracious with picking things up for people and, you know, trying to be helpful. I mean, I know that Ken remembers some not so good times, picking some things up.
Literally, last year, we called three times to one person, or one family and said, hey, these are out here.
Right.
You've got so much trash, please take care of this.
I did, I called multiple times, yes.
Actually, halfway forgot about that time.
Sorry, Ken.
That was a good one.
It wasn't bad, but not good, um, so we do, we do try to be, in, um, in town, we've also had situations where people have lost their trash service or, you know, things like that, we've also helped them out with, you know, hey, use our dumpster today, get rid of all the garbage you have piled up, get your trash service reinstated, I mean, I think we've been pretty generous on trying to help and things like that, so we're not uncaring, um, and unwilling to work with people, but when there's a blatant disregard of multiple times over and over again, what are you gonna do? It's not fair to all the other people that are taking care of their properties and taking pride in their properties, to have to look at those things, that's not fair.
When do we ever, did you guys ever, you know, I know we're talking about trash and stuff like that, but what about all the, the big piles of tree limbs and, did we ever have a, we talked about it back, way back.
So Carol and I and Justin, um, we took Justin's skid loader, and we went around and we picked up, uh, tons of brush. We stole a lot of boards from one gentleman.
I was sick that day.
No, was it bar? Oh, okay.
Yeah, the stolen wood.
Oh, yeah, we stole a bunch of wood from someone, although he said we could clean it up for him. Um, so we did do that, Ken, and we did pick up a lot of brush piles and stuff, and it was, I, and we just, I think, Cliff just drove the dump truck behind us and we loaded it, he dumped it and he met us at the next place. Yeah, we did, and it was good, I mean, I think it was pretty successful and we could always try to do that again too.
Well, I, Carol and I talked one time, it's like, maybe the guys could like, if it's out by the road, can't they just pick it up and, take care of it or take it to the pile?
I mean, they could to an extent, but it would be difficult to do that with the excavator, it would, that would be tough if, I mean, they could probably pick up some with the tractor and toss it in the bucket and then dump it in the dump trailer or one of the dump trucks or something like that.
The dump trailer part.
Yeah, so, I mean, they could, if people would put it out for them, you know, that would be something you have to talk to them about, so.
Oh, I was thinking, I'm hearing somebody snoring, it's that computer again, isn't it?
It is.
Is that what it is? I didn't hope somebody had like breathing problems down at that end of the table.
You know what, and this is not, this is, I'm not, I'm gonna tell you this, I was not off by myself after I started Aspertreasure, and I would've sworn up and down that was someone snoring, I even went outside and looked around the back of the building, to see if something had happened, if someone had left the tavern and fallen asleep, I am not kidding. And then I realized it was that computer, that's Carol's computer. It just makes that noise, so yes, that's what it sounds like, okay. So I think your plan of action should probably be, let me send this to Scott, let, let Scott look it over. Everybody maybe look and weigh in a little bit and kinda have a, you know, discussion about it.
This is a big.
It is.
Big ordinance.
It is, and the one we have now is pretty large and I'm sure there is some duplication, and maybe it, maybe we revise the one we have to have the fines and fees in it. So, I don't know.
Well, and if you have Scott look at it, maybe he can draft for us a better affidavit, that would go along with this.
With that, okay, okay. Yep, I'll call him tomorrow, or I'll just email it over to him, talk to him tomorrow, Coggy, will you send it to me by email?
I did send it to you.
You did, I printed it out, nevermind.
I was like, I did send it to you via email.
You did, I was like, wait, you did, it's been a long Tuesday.
Should we just go ahead and talk about who you talked to last time?
Ken, if you want to, I mean, that's the list I went to, there was.
Do you wanna do that during departments?
Okay.
I have.
I'm jumping.
You are.
You are, you are, you are.
I think we need to change that work.
Is there any other new business, Carol?
Other than, we do have one, um, one bid for the cemetery mowing.
You can open that or you can wait till departments or whatever. Yeah, we did run it out in the newspaper, um, Eric Crowder did put a bid in, but he has taken his bid back. He withdrew it, he withdrew it, yeah.
Text me, asked me, since he dropped out so late in the game, that if we needed his help, he would, you know.
He'd figure it out?
Yeah.
We did.
I haven't talked, I wanted to discuss that.
So I mean, and so if his name's still on the, if his hat's still in the ring, I can go get his bid, I have it over there, but.
Okay, well, let's, let's clarify what he needs by helping.
So how does it work for the town in the last five or six years having a subcontractor versus our guys doing it? I don't know if you were ever on the board whenever, like Tony and.
Yeah, well, we've talked about.
I don't know, I'm just, I just.
Cemetery mowing, we've tossed that around.
So, the last time the town mowed the cemetery without a subcontractor was, um, with Bob and Carol Groves, and that's been.
I was gonna say, I was on the board.
Yeah, and that's been a long time ago, and they were excellent and they were irreplaceable. And then we tried to do it for a little while, um, with Tony and a part timer, and that was not very successful. And at that point, Eric's been mowing it for. Yeah, I'd say for four or five years. But there's been discussion about the town employee doing the, that there is enough downtime for them to mow the cemetery. I've, I've said a few things to some of you guys lately about it, um, I think if you take the numbers, it costs us at least, probably close to ten thousand dollars is what we paid Eric Crowder last year to mow the cemetery on a weekly basis. Oh, one year we had someone else mow it, so there was another year of that.
Derek Guptel. Chris will work with him.
Yeah, Chris works with him, and he started out rough and then he kinda got into a rhythm, but, um, but it, I mean, it, it's very, it's costly to subcontract it, so I don't know what the right answer is, but.
It's not a fun job.
No, and they, and they do a good job, they keep it up, or, back in the day, that we couldn't keep up with it, you know, especially if you had to do it twice a week or, whatevers, but, I was just curious, I just.
Have we put anything out there for a other?
No, we haven't done anything like that.
Cause that could be a requirement, unless you know how to mow grass.
Our mowers would mow it, a, a little quicker mower would probably be nicer, so. So, I'll say that. I have one, and it's not really new business, but I have one resident request. Uh, Mike Lunsford has asked if he could have a few of our, our, when we put our new meters in. Um, our new water meters in, uh, we have to use a composite lid because they read through the cellular, so we have these metal lids. He's asked if he could have a few, but he wanted me to ask you guys first. He would like to make some art out of them.
Out of the steel ones?
Yes, he would like to make some, he has kind of an idea of some art he would like to make out of them. Does anyone mind if we give Mike a few meter lids?
I don't see a big deal with it.
As long as we all get an art piece out of it.
Alright, so I'll tell him.
Yeah, tell him he has to make two and one, one's for the town hall.
Alright, that's all I got. It's on my list.
Those were made in Indiana.
Yeah, I don't, and I don't know what they say on them, I don't know. Some towns, their names imprinted on them. I don't think ours is, but. Um, it'd be probably preferred that they're not buried, yeah, so. So some of the meters probably need like a.
Well, mine definitely needs a little.
Like the riser.
I was gonna say, mine definitely needs, mine's the least. Mine needs raised up too.
So I don't know, we should have some, um. Gary ordered some.
Cause I'm never home, so I'll see how much mine drops.
Uh, Gary, um, ordered some, up some risers last summer. And apparently they arrived and everyone forgot about them and they arrived with an expensive bill too, so. Which fine we needed them, but we do have some on hand, so I'm saying.
Did Gaby ever order that, um, tool for clamp for the guys?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
I think he was gonna order a smaller.
I think he was gonna do it, yeah, give him something different. We haven't ever.
Hey, what was the tool, cause Tony, I can't remember, Tony doesn't know what the tool was.
I think we have something. It was a clamp of some type, so when they were changing out, because they've been changing out so many things, I think they have something now. But I'm not sure, they may have found something too. You can go to departments, I think.
Okay, let's go to the departments. Water sewer, we have seventy-five penalties, no shut offs.
That's about thirty.
Um, yeah, and the reason there are seventy-five penalties, the, is, was because of when it was due, um. Let me look back at the calendar. Friday was the due date and we extended it until Monday. We didn't actually write penalties until Tuesday that week, so we gave them over the weekend and we had a whole. So, so it was kinda nice. Um, this month, it's due on Saturday, so we'll definitely extend it. We won't write penalties on Monday, we won't do them till Tuesday again, so, so yeah. When it's due at that end of the week, that little gap and just a reminder, hey, your water bills are due, we do get quite a few in, so. Um, on water and sewer, the furnace at the water plant is out. He has not had a furnace for, I don't know, a month now. Um, the blower went out on it and it's a, it's a, was put in in nineteen eighty-five. So it is pretty old, um, some furnace guys I've been come, I've been using, they came and looked at it and said that. That they don't make that motor anymore, that they could get a different one for seven hundred fifty dollars. It's like the fan that's not blowing, it, it's heating. It's one of those hanging units, um, and then they quoted me. Three thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to put in a new one, but I did call Andrews, we do have a longstanding relationship with Andrews. Doug Andrews also sent someone out and they said the same thing. They thought they could get the motor, but they can't get the motor either. And they quoted us like twenty-nine hundred dollars, um. And I, he did not write that up for me, but we don't have to put a furnace in at this moment. Gary said we don't have to put a furnace in, we can wait on that for a little while, but I'm just letting you know that we have got a couple quotes. And so, um, something to think about, we will need to do it before winter.
What's the square footage of that building?
It's not very big, it's pretty small and, you know, so, yeah. So that's just where we're at on that, so I'm just letting you know that the furnace is out.
Maybe we can get some more quotes.
Yeah, we can, we can call around. I thought Andrew's price was actually pretty fair. I thought he was, he, I thought he'd be really high, but he's done a lot of work for us in the past, um. Also on the water, we did, Matt Kingery from Midwest Meter told us meters were two to three months out, so we should go ahead and order. And our plan was to install ten, starting in the spring months, so I had Andrea order her next ten. In the anticipation they would not arrive for a while and they came the next day. Not really sure how that works. So she assigned them and I do believe that they have all been installed already. So we're kinda getting a jump on it and then we'll probably go ahead and order another ten. She'll just have to, she'll wanna wait till she reads again. They're gonna read again on the twenty-fifth. And once she reads, she'll know of the next batch that's out. So the last two times they've read, it's been so wet that some of those meters will read when it dries out. There's just nothing you can do this kind of time of year, but we have officially have sixty-two new ones in. That she can live read all the time. The meter for the school is here. Uh, Mike is gonna try to do that over spring break when school is out. He will have to have Chad on site too and, you know.
I better check to see if they're on vacation.
Oh, okay, if they're not on vacation, then if somebody's around, Ryan or whoever else was maintenance, I don't know. Okay, but he does, he doesn't wanna try to do that without them and there is a concern about the lid and the reader. So, uh, the plan is Mark Manley also has a large pit like that. He has a pit lid the same as this one, so they're going to take his lid, have John Bennett cut the hole in it with his plasma cutter. And try to retrofit the reader in there and put that lid back on and then see if it'll read. So they're going to experiment with his, cause they put a new one on his already. So, um, or they were planning on putting a new one on, I'm not sure if it's installed or not, but they do, they have a plan for that, so.
So you said there's sixty-two new ones?
Sixty-two new ones. Three hundred and sixty. And they're all reading. Yep, three hundred and sixty-two, uh, well, we have three hundred and seventy customers. Three hundred and sixty-two meters, eight wastewater only customers. I think I'm saying that right. Maybe it's three hundred and sixty-eight wastewater only, something like that, but about three hundred and sixty meters is what we've been estimating off of. They're two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy-five dollars per meter and that's just the reader, that's not the brass. We have not been replacing the brass, which is the actual unit that it flows through. We do have several of the brass on hand, though we did buy a bunch of them, but as long as you, as long as when you put that meter on, it keeps reading. We're considering that brass to be good, so they have replaced maybe two brass pieces. He repla, he did replace a, a brass piece on Gary Herb's today in the subdivision when they were doing all that and Gary was here for that. So, so that's how meter replacement is going and I haven't heard from Rob out there at Wastewater, so I think everything should be fine with him. Gary's been in another town a bunch on the valves and everything, so.
Okay, street, whose street?
Yeah, I have really nothing other than, so I know pothole season's coming, so what have we done the last couple of years? Have we done hot patch or just cold patch or nothings or?
Um, so last spring, Jace was here. He got patched from the pit in Monizuma, it was probably a cold patch mix. Um, I think Mike got patched last fall from, um, I think he got it from the county. Which is also from PCA, it's also a cold mix, so, yeah. We need some patching on Line Street, that little side street over there, what else needs patched?
I do know.
There's one right up, four away.
Yeah, right, turning towards the north, there's, there's a hole there, but I mean. Mostly, I mean, a lot of central will have fixed now with the. With what they're tearing up.
How are they fixing that? Are they just, they bringing a asphalt company in or are they just?
I think so, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure, Ken.
They have to replace it to same quality or better.
So, and that's only what, like five, six years old?
It was put in in two thousand and eighteen?
Which one we talking about?
Central Street, Central Street was eighteen.
Well, Map Street needs desperately to be.
Some pothole fill.
Pothole filled, you know, the ones, whole side of my yard is a pothole.
I do believe Cliff did do, do a bunch of alley grading the other day.
He did. I can hear him.
Yeah, and he is good, and he is good at that. He does a good job at that and the cemetery looks pretty good. I don't know if he graded it out too. But I, when I drove out there the other day to mark something, it looks pretty nice too, so. So you're saying we need a pothole plan, Ken?
Well, I am, I'm just trying to be proactive instead of reacting. I just know it's coming down the pipe here, I just.
Didn't we get some hot patch though?
We have gotten hot patch before, so in the past, you can get hot patches when Wild Bash Valley opens their plant. And you can get that from them, um, Tom Spain borrowed a hot box. He borrowed a hot box from, I think Vermillion County loaned him one, so he got hot patch and, because you can get hot patch. But you have to keep it hot. So, so the guys will take a torch to it. They're supposed to take a torch to it. I don't know if they do or not, so, um, but he would like borrow a hot box from someone and then he'd go get hot patch and do it like that, so. There's been a couple of different ways it's been done and that's what you're thinking of, I think, probably, Ken.
Oh yeah, that's when we used to borrow it and, I mean, we used to have one, didn't we, then we sold it.
Well, we had a pactor.
Way back.
Yes, we had a pactor that they bought and then no one knew really how to use it and never got used, so we sold it. And then everyone was like, we should never sold that, so, I don't know.
So we'll just talk to the guys and see when they.
Yeah, there's nothing they can do till there's some patch available.
Well, the hot patches better, cold patches will last, I mean, it lasts, but it's.
Yeah, hot patches.
People started complaining last year before we could get it done and that's because it just wasn't any ready to get it. Okay, park.
As I can tell, there's nothing majorly disturbed.
Today.
Was it?
It was hotspot, it was busy today, the trail was busy. There were so many kids out, the trail was crazy, there was all kinds of people out, it was great. I didn't notice that, I saw it on the big set, I saw it on the merry-go-round.
We've replaced about all the swings, there's just one and I think I'll pick up another one.
One more swing, okay, I have a couple rebates, so.
Maybe they might have to hit some more chain, I don't know.
Fire total runs ten, two fires, seven medical, one other assist.
Cemetery, one burial, two cremations, three plots sold.
Oh, busy month.
I know, and then I sold three plots again on March first, breaking in the dough.
Reminder about fireman's breakfast is on Easter Sunday.
Easter Sunday.
Not the third Sunday this month. It's what? Easter Sunday.
Thirty-first.
What Sunday is that this year? Very last one of the month.
It is the twenty-eighth. No, I'm sorry, that's April, it's the thirty-first. Sorry, I have my April calendar fucked up, three thirty-one.
Did we put something in the paper about the cemetery?
We did, the cemetery cleanup will run tomorrow, even though it's gotta be off there by Friday, but, or by the eighteenth, right? The eighteenth, so yeah.
Actually, I'm, it's the two, they have to have it cleaned off and they can put back on Good Friday.
Yes, on.
So that's two weeks for us to clean up what everybody's not taking away.
Called me about when we could redecorate, so.
Yeah, several people called already.
No, the newspaper called me to make sure they had it right, so.
Well, once again, we'd like to reiterate that no metal, no glass objects at the cemetery. No yard decor, it's just burial flowers, silk flowers. And one, one hook per plot. Once again, we have the, on the website is the, uh, decoration rules of the cemetery. Everybody would please read that. Okay, Kevin, do you wanna give your police report?
I got it right here. Uh, three warnings. They had six ordinance violations, two warrant services, one welfare check, one domestic situation. Two unknown incidents, or accidents, um, accident, property damage one, and then traffic stop six.
Okay, now, Kevin, property, let's see, you can do that one for me.
Uh, the one I know that's made a little progress is the one over here on Central Street. Cars are gone. They did clean up a pretty decent portion of that trash and I know the trailer left. Seen that trailer out the other day.
Yeah, it's gone.
They pulled it out of there a day or two ago, so they've made a little bit of an effort to try to clean up.
I do believe he called up here. I do believe he called and talked to Andrea.
Yeah, he was very happy last time I left.
Okay, um, he had some questions about some things, so I, I know, did you talk to him, have you talked to her?
Andrea? No, the question he had, he asked me about was, he wanted to know if it was okay if he gravel, gravel this whole yard.
Yeah, he asked Andrea that.
Cause he's got eight or nine cars he wants to move in over there. And I said, probably not a good idea, but you can call the town hall and.
He asked her, yeah, he asked about putting his yard to all gravel and, but he didn't say, I don't know, he didn't say anything about cars and she was like, I don't.
He said eight or nine cars?
So I don't, I don't know how that, yeah.
Come a weed patch next year and be harder to move. Then by the time I got done with him, he was mad at me and said he was probably just gonna move out of town. I got broad shoulders, I can.
Refrigerator and stuff, is it still?
I noticed if the frid, I didn't look behind or see if that refrigerator was gone or not, but I thought I seen it on that trailer.
There's still a little refrigerator laying inside and there's something on the front porch, it looks like a sweeper.
Well, I know it had a, like a entertainment unit on the porch.
I think I saw that, but I saw a sweeper and other stuff on the front porch, but.
Well, they're trying.
Yeah, they are trying and it is better than what it was.
Uh, there were no chickens.
No chickens that we know of.
No chickens on Elm Street?
No, on Elm Street? No, I wouldn't. I, I did everything but went in the backyard, I did. But I did see the backyard and there was none there. His stepfather, I think it is. Has a farm south of Rockville somewhere. I'm pretty sure that's where the chickens came from.
That's what I figured where they came from, yeah. I didn't think he had any chickens.
And Miller Street, Mr. Miller?
Miller Street pretty much looks today like it did the day I gave him the letter and talked to him.
I thought it did when I was over that way the other day too. Gold Lane.
Same thing. When I went and talked to her, all she complained about was everybody else around.
Okay, I think that, I think that we need to consider court for her.
That, um, the other one that she was complaining about catty corner from the garage falling down. That gentleman, I believe, may be going to some assisted living facility.
I don't know.
On the end of Map Street.
Oh, yes, okay, yes, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
Does he know that? They've been saying that for a while.
I think, no, I think, I think he knows.
So you haven't actually talked to him?
I think they actually, I think they've actually con, maybe convinced him of that. So I don't know if that'll expedite that, but I did talk to the wife that day. And she said that they were just gonna have to buckle down and get it done. It's like, the garage is already fell down. Now it's laying on top of cars.
I was thinking of that.
Yeah, we will need to start thinking about cleanup day.
And then May, usually.
Yeah.
Who schedules the civic center now?
Uh, you know Jill that was here last month on the entertainment committee?
Oh, yeah.
I think Jill is in charge of that. I can text her and ask her.
Okay, yeah, what Saturday, what Saturday?
Depends on what you wanna do. I'm out of town on the eleven. That's Mother's Day weekend anyway.
We usually don't do it.
No, we usually do it. I mean, there's the fourth and that's the beginning of May. I don't know. The civic center, don't they have alumni the first weekend in May?
It's Mother's Day weekend.
Oh, it's Mother's Day weekend, okay. We always try to get it done before then, I feel like. So I would say May the fourth would probably be the best, cause the spring fleeing is at the civic center the weekend before that.
I was gonna say, I felt like last year, didn't we end up like having it on Earth Day pretty much?
Yeah, cause that was in April.
Yeah, April twenty second would be.
Yeah, April twenty second is a Monday this year, so.
Well, let's get with her and see.
Okay, let me, I'll ask, I'll message Jill. I'll write myself a note.
I mean, we could ask about the red and white parking lot again, but.
Yeah.
I, did that work out alright? I mean, we had to clean up.
It was okay. I mean, yeah.
We don't have any bathrooms, but the.
Yeah.
We're all close to home. We can just go home.
Yeah.
So, okay. Um, Cheryl, did you wanna talk about your vehicles at your place?
We're getting them cleaned up.
Okay. Well, our, your husband works on cars, right? Okay, and is he still doing that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you know, as long as, if they were in a building or something, you know, like a business or. You know, it would be different, but it's it's, you know, exciting, I'm sure. You probably want them gone too. I don't know, but.
It's just, it's part of the business, but we're trying to, we're getting to where the customers don't bring them all at once.
Okay, well, we appreciate it. We really do that you're working with us and we really do appreciate it.
For sure.
Okay, so that's all. Was there any new ones that anybody wants to bring up?
I was gonna ask Kevin about.
Kevin, did you have any success with um, Bubz Old House? Jordan.
Well, any of the three right there, cause they were the ones that we complained about last month.
Where the boat is, yeah.
The day I went by there, they weren't home. I talked to Gary one night. His health is a little.
Yeah, he was talking about getting a wheelchair ramp.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I seen somebody over there today carrying some stuff out of his back shed. They were moving stuff out of there, but.
Yeah, I did too.
That little red car. Yeah, I seen them.
Parked in the road and they moved it.
Yeah.
It was kinda in the road. That's why I slowed down. They were putting stuff in the car. I thought, hey, if they're moving stuff, leave them alone.
Yeah, that's why I was like, well, if they're cleaning everything up, that's.
Well, it looked like they had trash service for a while, but then I don't think there's a trash thing there now.
Bubz Old House, I think he, it's like he loads his trash up and takes it with him to work and then.
Yeah, it goes somewhere.
I don't know what he's doing.
I don't think he hasn't. The the tall house next to him, they do have an Allen's thing out there and I thought maybe that they had an Allen's thing too. Maybe they don't. I don't know.
The third one down had one that was overfilled.
Those are in the middle. Whose are they? Which line, which house do they go with?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
We'll have to find out.
Yeah, that property needs addressed. Um, the other thing we need to talk about, you and I talked about. Is the corner of Main and Middle, that Rich Baker's corner. I've had ev- so many people come in and complain that's so hard to see with that Jeep sitting there in front of Rich's building. Of that corner to turn, um.
It's also in front of the post office. They parked that black thing, you know, right in the handicapper in front of a freaking, every morning. I was actually gonna start leaving notes on it or.
Parking what there?
Uh, it was that black vehicle that's in the ten minute parking, but it's like goes all the way to the fire hydrant.
Well, a lot of people have talked about that at Rich's and Kevin says we just need to move the sign back.
Yeah.
Because it's.
There's a sign there and Rich will put his car right where it says, no parking from here back. He'll put his car right there.
But isn't it illegal for him to park that Jeep the wrong way on the outside of the street? Is that a thing or not?
Not really. I mean, you could get him for crossing over the road to park that way.
I mean, I'm just saying that if it was, if it was turned around and you could see over the hood a little bit, I don't know. It is hard to see though and I.
What really needs to be done is that sign needs to be pulled up and moved that way about ten or fifteen feet. That's been that way. I fought that for years.
Mm-hmm, so that would be up to you guys to make a decision on that.
I'll make a motion to move the sign ten feet back.
I second.
There we go, boom.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, next door, I heard that they're starting to have a lively little business. They were on a podcast.
Over at the.
Oh, yeah, the old Stark Saloon.
They can spend the night there.
Yeah.
They got something going on April twentieth over there.
Okay.
Yeah, they do have something coming up.
They uh. They were on a podcast that it's a pretty well-known podcast. I listen to it, so. And like they they talked about it and like. Yeah, you could.
If you haven't watched on YouTube, you have to watch it on YouTube.
I'll do that tomorrow.
Oh, that that one group that was in there?
Yeah, the Stark Saloon. Did you go watch on YouTube? You have to go watch it on YouTube too. Okay, let me ask this. So I'm not, I'm not, you're gonna have to tell Rich we're moving that sign.
Yeah.
But. The cars that are parked over um, by Jeremy Sharon's building, by the nineteen hundred building, that blue truck has them parking like. Three feet away from the curb. He's really far out and I don't know if they live in the apartments. Is there not enough? Apartment parking in the back for them to park in the back of both of those buildings?
I don't, I don't know. I can see how many cars are back there. Hard to know who all is back there when they're coming and going.
Right, I mean.
Oh, trust me, I wish there was more parking because when we come down to the firehouse and try to.
Well, right.
Try to go on a run and there's nowhere to park.
Right, there's nowhere to park. I know, that's what I'm saying is, and now we're taking a parking space away.
Right.
But I, I think it, I mean, I do. I think it's a matter of time for there.
But I would move that sign about the length of that Jeep back. Probably fifteen feet or whatever.
He's wanting diagonal parking there again, like he used to have.
That was back in the day. You look at old photos.
Too bad.
Yeah.
Further out in the road.
But, you know, I tried to tell him, you know, one big truck there and nobody will see anything. I mean, everything's so much longer.
Yeah.
Cafe is.
I don't think that's gonna solve anything.
Yeah, I don't think that's the answer right now. I mean, I understand. Here's the thing is you can't. I mean, if people wanna come to town, if people wanna eat at the restaurant, they'll find a place to park. If people wanna come to fireman's breakfast, they'll find a place to park. We can only put so much into finding more parking or worrying about that. I just wonder why, if all their tenants. If there's not enough room in the back to park, if that's why there's so much on the street, I don't know, or Rich has too many cars, I don't know.
Only thing other from the police department, all our uniform stuff's in now.
I noticed you had a new shirt on.
Everybody got two long sleeve shirts, two short sleeve shirts, two pairs of pants and a winter under shirt. We still, sometime before next winter, we're gonna have to get a sweater or something. Kind of get us some ball caps, but.
Getting Lieutenant Dangle shorts for the summertime.
That'll be a negative. There'll be no wearing of the shorts as long as I'm in charge.
So if we finished about the parking thing, I was gonna ask Kevin about. Is, is there any day during the week that you can supervise like the West Hill flying of cars down the hill?
I sat down JT's this afternoon for a little bit.
I know, but I mean, over by the, you know, where the trail is and everything, I've had multiple people complain about. They come off that hill. Some kid's gonna come out of there and we're gonna lose.
I'll have Michael move the sign. He'll probably work tomorrow. I'll have him move the sign back over there for a little bit.
I mean, if they just see you there and see the signs, you know, and like they take off from JT's like it's, you know.
Oh, I stopped a lady coming down the hill today.
Good, outstanding. That's.
I saw you had somebody pulled over at the school.
Yeah, her plates were expired by eighteen months and she's running a little too fast, so.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, that's what I wanna know. If you could beef that up a little or.
Yeah, we haven't had the sign over there for about a month. We've had it down south and up by the school.
A little more visual interest of the car being over there and the sign might maybe slow them down a little bit. Okay, thank you.
Ken, are you excited for another cleanup day?
To be back on board, yeah. Tony gets to be a cleanup day helper as well. Hey, sometimes we get treasures, guys.
And sometimes.
We could take them home.
Are you to me now? Is it my turn?
I think so.
We're ready for you.
I have the annual financial report. It has been asked for highs in the newspaper. Carol did sign off on it. Um, I think it went fine. They add more stuff every year.
It was a little tense.
It was a little tense. It's been a lot, it's been really kinda crazy in here. Um, I will be traveling. I will be out of the office for ten whole days, actually eight whole days of office time, but I will be gone. Um, Andrea is poised and ready. Yeah, yeah, just in check on her a little bit. Um, so she's, she's ready to go for that and I mean. She knows that I'll have my laptop with me if she needs something. I can remote into my computer for her if I need to.
Does she know it's consecutive days?
She does know it's consecutive days. Um, so I will be gone. Um, I leave on twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth?
Yep, I'm back on, I'll be back, come back on the third late that night, so I'll make an appearance at some point. Um. And then we did hold a community input session here the week after the town council meeting. With Partnership and the Community Foundation and it was interesting. Um, some different, that was kind of cool to host that and have them some different ideas flying around. Um, as far as my work, the annual financial report was what was really wearing on me. Um, I do think that. I will put out some, I was hoping to get it done today and I just ran out of time. Um, I'd like for everybody really start thinking about. The fact that we really do need to raise our water rates. I know nobody wants to hear me say that, but um, right now we are. About a break even every month, but once we start buying these water meters, um, just buying the ten of them. That's on the bill somewhere. It was, you know, four thousand dollars. I mean, forty five hundred dollars, something like that, so. That's a pretty big chunk. We do split that with wastewater. I do think wastewater rates probably need to be examined as well. Cause we haven't done anything with those since we started and and everything's more expensive now, from your power to your chemicals, to your staff. I mean.
And we haven't raised since what, was it twenty twenty?
Twenty nineteen or twenty twenty on the water.
Me and you talked that day and it was like.
Every two years.
We talked about that and then we haven't done it.
And then COVID hit.
We did.
And I think that's what stalled us there.
Right.
But I think we oughta go back to that.
And I mean, I, I don't think that's unreasonable, but I will say this, if you do the basic math, um. Twenty seven, twenty nine is your base rate. That's for twenty five hundred gallons. And um, you know, a lot of people on the hill, that's what they pay, is they pay twenty seven, twenty nine plus tax. It's twenty nine, twenty. So a ten percent raise is two dollars and, you know.
Yeah.
That much, seventy nine cents. And so that's not that much plus tax, but it's also not that much in our pockets. A ten percent raise on our overall water billing is about a thousand dollars or twelve hundred dollars. That really doesn't help us over time. I think you need to consider a little bit more of a raise, I think maybe fifteen.
I was gonna say, I thought.
Fifteen's a little more reasonable.
Played with it and fifteen was kind of the like.
Yeah.
What we needed.
Yeah.
We talked about even higher, but we didn't wanna go any higher.
We can uh, hire a rate consultant to study our rates. I talked to a, a younger guy that's doing rate consulting and he told me it would be fifteen thousand dollars. To do both water and wastewater. So, so how much more do we need to increase our rates to cover the cost of rate study? We don't, we don't have to do a rate study to increase them, cause the other times we've done them, we've done them on our own. We've just given the numbers to Scott and he's redone the ordinance and then our software company will input those rates for us. So we don't have to do that and have a study. A study's nice. Because then they can give you feelers um, on where you should be, but at the end of the day.
At the end of the day, they're gonna tell us what.
They're gonna tell us more than what. Yeah, they're gonna tell us more than what. Cause me and you looked at it that one day and I was just like. Okay, so realistically.
From a similar sized town in a similar s- situation and.
What'd you say?
Could you look at a study from a similar sized town, kind of in a similar situation and get something from it?
If someone was willing to share it.
Right.
Yeah, um, we probably could. I know that uh. Wastewater has had a lot of repairs in the last few years, even though it had so many upgrades. We've had, we still have had things go out and whatnot. Um. Water, you know, a furnace, that's gonna cost us no less than three thousand dollars. They'll have to have a furnace come winter in there. And, you know, I mean, if you think about the overall, three hundred more meters have to be put in. That's over the next few years. That's a hundred thousand dollars right there. So, I mean, that's, that's the simple math of that. And we just limp them along as long as we can. So, we will pay off a water bond in two thousand and twenty six will be the last year. It'll pay off before two thousand twenty six and so that will free up like a good four thousand dollars a month. But we still have to do that for another year and a half, so, or more. And then if we pay off that other loan from this wastewater, which I have a column to Matt Martin about that. Um, that would free up twenty five hundred dollars a month in wastewater too. So that would help out a little bit too. So there's my thoughts on that. I'm just putting that out there again, but I can run some spreadsheets and show you guys of like what are, what we're taking in. What we're go- what's going out every month and you'll see some months where it's good. It's like, oh, look, we're up two thousand dollars and then you're like, oh, wait, we're down five thousand dollars, you know.
So you say that, they, me and you sat and played with it for.
Yeah.
Probably good forty five minutes and it was like.
Yeah.
I was thinking realistically, we needed seventeen percent, but we said that we don't wanna go over fifteen because it.
Yeah, and we're not growing.
And it was like seventeen and a half percent is really what it, I, if I remember correctly, what it needed, but it just.
I mean, we might put two or three more houses back on that have been empty or something like that, but for the most part, we don't have a lot of new construction or anything like that. For us to grow and say, okay, we're getting, that's the rate consultant's question is, how are you growing? How many more houses are you getting? And I'm like, well, none. So.
Study complete.
Yep.
Well, um, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay, I have a couple of things to address since we talked about the water and stuff. I'd say we think about it as a board and maybe vote on it next week. Um, what kind of uh, rate, I think we should raise our rates.
Well, we might even have a.
Do you wanna have?
Get us together to.
Well, you can't have an executive session for that. I mean, if you wanna like, if you wanna appoint a couple of people to work together. Or to work with me on it, we can do that.
Okay.
Um, so I could work with two council members without you being anything like quorum related, so.
Well.
Well, I'm willing to help out with that.
Since Tony's new on the board.
Don't make Tony do that.
He has lab experience.
He just said he'd be happy to.
Okay, then, that's fine.
So I think that um.
Let it go.
He would be very good for that.
Well, did you want to give him water since you are?
Yes, I wanted to give him water since I'm water and cemetery and.
So give him water sewer.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, come see over water sewer and we have a wastewater operator and we have a water operator. And they just kinda do their thing and they'll let us know when they need something.
We'll try to introduce you one day when.
They'll show up. Rob will, Rob will surface at a meeting and Gary will come around too if we need him to, so.
Actually, I didn't have supper, so I ate pretty much the whole box.
Yeah, so, all right. So you want, you want, okay, so Tony and I can get together. Cody, you in on that too?
Yeah.
All right, all right. Tony, Cody and me first increases, okay.
We just, I say have a plan come next meeting.
Yeah, we put it off too long.
We have.
Well, we, yeah.
We just get busy, yeah, yep.
Let's definitely do something about that.
All right, what else you got, Carol?
Well, I think that was it, um. Well, I think that was it, um, have we looked at the bills? Oh.
What do you wanna do about cemetery mowing, yeah, do you wanna accept the bid, do you want to?
Can we run it one more time?
Um, I, honestly, I don't, no one responded on that ad, I don't believe that response was from that ad.
No, it wasn't.
Right, and the ad cost a hundred bucks.
Okay.
I ran it for two, I think I ran it for two weeks, so they're pretty pricey.
Mowing is gonna have to start very shortly.
Yeah, we have to get somebody out there to mow, I mean, I didn't.
Now, is this a more or less expensive than what we've?
Less.
Oh, if it's less than what we've been paying, then.
I think, I think what Carol's trying to say without like saying it is, do we, do we need to revamp our staffing for the town? Do we need to reallocate some duties?
So.
Yes, do we need to ask, you know.
Do we need to go back to a full-time employee?
So we don't have time, so we won't have time before the mowing starts alright, so I mean.
Right, but do you accept that bid and tell them that that may be temporary?
Yes, we will do that.
I mean, is that, is that fair in accepting the bid, cause it, you know.
Well, if it's temporary, they may say, well.
What was the bid, anyone wants to know?
Yeah.
What was the bid?
Three hundred.
Three hundred per mow.
Yeah.
Which is, Eric was doing it for.
Three seventy.
Three seventy-five, and his bid, he up to four twenty-five before he withdrew, yeah.
I mean, so yeah, that's a good price now.
It is a good price, isn't it? So I just think that if you, if you do ask him to mow it, or, I mean, you have to make sure that he knows that it may not be the whole season. If we could hire someone, I don't know, maybe you need a committee on that.
Well, and that's what I, so.
How about that? Maybe you need to do a two-person committee to discuss the town job responsibilities.
I think.
Oh, I was going way deep there, not just mowing now.
Well, I'm saying if you said we need to go back to a full-time person, then, I think that. That, you know, maybe that's something you guys need to discuss about the job duties.
Yeah, cause that's, I mean.
Yeah.
At this point, like if we're.
So, so yeah, that's whatever you wanna do.
Yeah, I would, I would reach out to them and say, hey, yeah, we would love to go forward with this, for the time being, um. Hopefully it lasts for the full summer, but we'll see.
Well, yeah.
We'll just say it's contingent upon the work you do.
No.
So, it makes it look like, you know, if we're just that happy with it, then.
So, Cody has the bills, somebody has bills, who's got bills?
Probably down there, these are.
Cody's throwing bills last night, I need everybody to initial, this was last month's bills, and I had something on there twice, so I just wanted to recognize that I produced that. Did I actually give you the bills?
I have not seen them at all.
I'll give you the bill.
Well, I'm looking, but, you know, why would you give them to me?
Did I, maybe I didn't give them to anybody.
I don't see any.
I don't know, that's not asking us.
Let's see here.
The county's payable register.
Yeah, I.
Tony had it.
I had it.
Tony had it.
Okay.
He didn't know what he wanted.
Sure, but I ain't paying the bills.
Let's sign it.